We will call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education for September 7th, 2021 with Stanford Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to reply to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item on the agenda is special recognitions and presentations. And Mr. Matt Demato, Principal of Bridgeport High.
Okay. Thank you. A few months back, we asked for approval for the press box in the weight room for it to the building to begin. The physical structure is there, and we are now moving toward, in the midst of fundraising to furnish it. One of the things we did so that we had enough money to go forward with the project, money that the board approved was $150,000, and then money we had in-house to get us to the point where we could say, we've got enough to do this, we took the rubber flooring out of the weight room, and that was like closer to like $40,000, I believe. And what we were going to do is fundraise for that, plus the racks that go along with it, after we got the physical structure. Total cost, $118,000, let's just round it up to $120,000. Since then, since May, we have, I've got $78,275 pledged, and of that pledge, we've received What I'm asking, since we are now after July 1, is for the board to match that amount up to, I think it's $25,000 you've done in the past, 20, 20, up to $20,000. And that's the reason why I'm here, is to ask for that kind of assistance, which y'all provided in the past, Bridgeport High School and other high schools. And again, we have knocked out a substantial chunk of that money amount. That's really it. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm for it. I think that we should help them out in this particular scenario. I'd like to see you guys work together with Dr. Stuck, Mrs. Superintendent Stotler, to see if we can work that out.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah, I mean, you're within the rules of that, the matching up to $20,000, so just want to place it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
That brings us down to delegations. And with delegations, the notice to all speakers who appear before the Harrison County Board of Education, speakers who appear before the Board of Education are asked to express themselves in a civil manner at all times, with due respect to the dignity, privacy of others who are affected by the content of your comments. This is public notice that all meetings of this school board are audiotaped. Most regular meetings are videotaped to be televised later on Tom Warner Public Access Channel 18. While it is not the intent of the Harrison County Board of Education to ever stifle public input into deliberations, all speakers should be aware that your public comments made here today, if they violate the rights of any other person, especially under laws of defamation or invasion of privacy, you could be held legally and individually responsible. If you're unsure of the factual nature of any claim, comments, or allegations you are about to make, the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult first with legal counsel. With that, we have a few delegations here, and I'll remind all delegations, you have exactly five minutes, and we adhere to that rule because we have so many delegations. So first up, Jim Machetti of Reedsville, West Virginia.
I can adhere to your five-minute time limit. Do I have somebody else speaking also, and they're going to relegate their time to me because mine goes over about a minute? Is that fine, or do you want to hear two?
Someone that's already signed up?
Yes.
That would be fine, that they would get four minutes.
Okay. My name's Jim Machetti, and I'm here to represent my grandsons, who I love very much, and those parents that have similar feelings about the mask policy that their kids are now facing. I was raised to stand up for my beliefs, and that's what I have done throughout my life, without ever being afraid to voice my opinion. I wasn't sure how many parents would attend, but I know many more would have come had they not been afraid that some form of retaliation would be taken out on them or their children. U.S. Board members are stepping on the rights of parents to decide for themselves if and what kind of position they want to follow as it pertains to the wearing of masks in their health decisions. Isn't it a sad shame that people have become afraid to express their opinions without some form of punishment? However, I am here regardless. But be assured, if my family or grandsons suffer any type of retaliation because of my speaking here before you tonight, it will be met with swiftly and in an equal manner. Your job is to make the education system better for school students and to make decisions about education, not to make health decisions and choices for the parents. This is not what you were elected to do. You have failed the students with the virtual learning, and all those students have been left behind. How does anyone measure the damage done to the school students, not only physically, but socially and psychologically from wearing the mask? Nobody listens to the science when it comes to the coronavirus and the kids. There is less than 1% of the people under age 18 who have died from the coronavirus in this country. And this is according to the CDC, 385 out of 330 million in the United States. And that didn't take into account any underlying conditions or health concerns with those students. There have been many changes in this country over the past several years since the coronavirus hit in early 2019. The economy, the schools, and the lives of American citizens have been changed in many ways. We've had situations where the government and its entities have taken away the right of citizens to make decisions for themselves and their children. This isn't the America that I grew up in, and I know it isn't the America that you grew up in, and I certainly don't want it to be the America that my children, grandchildren grow up in. There is a storm coming. It's moving all across the United States, and will come to Bridgeport. Citizens and parents nationwide are fed up and starting to take a stand against some of the ridiculous mandates and policies that they are now facing. U.S. Board members are either sheep, you're following what others want you to do, or you're brainwashed and believe everything that you've been told and hear from the news, CDC, and other sources, where you'd just like having the power over the people. I would just like to request that you consider changing the policy of the wearing mask in the Harrison County schools. I am joined by a delegation of parents who share the same viewpoint, which is no mask for kids. And I'm not sure how many parents attended. I talked to quite a few, and a lot of them wanted to be here, but again, were afraid. When the coronavirus pandemic started in early 2019, nobody really knew how to handle it. The country was to shut down for two to three weeks to flatten the curve, that's what we were told, and get some kind of a control. The two to three weeks then became months, and then you're all aware of what happened from then on. Schools, restaurants, small businesses, all shut down, but not the grocery stores, not Walmarts, not Amazon, not liquor stores. And to this day, many of the businesses have gone under, failed to come back, and I'm sure that's the case in this town. School kids have lost their activities. They lost their activities that year, sports, swimming, all the summer things that they would normally do, athletics and stuff like that. High school kids lost their junior and senior years, their proms, their athletics, the opportunity for college scouts to see their, the older kids play for the last time, maybe get scholarships. They can't ever get that back. That's been taken away. Their best school years were ruined, they can't be replaced. When school did resume in the fall of 2020, it didn't last long before everything became virtual. This may have worked for some students, but for the majority, it didn't work. Parents were frustrated because they really weren't equipped to do the job of teachers. They either had to give up their jobs, pay daycare, or some other source to take care of their kids. And if you're aware and you pay attention to these, you will notice the depression and suicide rates climbed to an all-time high, especially among students. Most students are now a year behind in their education as a result. Our students need in-person loaning and without masks. So here we are at the beginning of another school year, and the masks are back again. Mind you, this is the start of the third school year that this has been affecting us. As of now, there's not any conclusive proof that a mask will stop a virus. If you want to get conclusive proof on how effective a mask is, then you need to check with a professional industrial hygienist, who is an expert in the field of being safe in hazardous environments. Doctors don't have that level of extra piece, expertise, and neither does the CDC or the NIH.
Mr. Machetti, that's the extra minute, the six minutes.
Well, the other person gets five minutes, correct? And they delegate.
Who lives the other person?
Russell Coe, sir.
Okay, you're going to yield, however, that's what I mean, he said a minute, extra minute.
Okay. Well, I assure you, I'm almost done. I don't like public speaking, but this was an important minute.
I just want to make it fair for everyone.
Okay. So you can find studies that support both sides of the coin. I mean, that's obvious. Teachers wanted the vaccine before they went back to the classroom. So they now have the vaccine, most teachers have been vaccinated. Obviously, this still isn't enough. Kids are still required to wear the mask. We've been told that the vaccine will protect you from the virus, isn't that correct? So why then the mask? We're also told that the mask protects you from the virus. So if that's the case, why did the government of West Virginia approve the release of criminals from jails and prisons? Why didn't we buy them a mask? Why don't we move, why don't we, why don't we remove the desk from the classrooms and replace them with restaurant tables? That way, when the kids get to the table, they can take off the mask. So my point is, can anybody see the hypocrisy here? What's going on? You got to use your own common sense. Our precious kids have been used as political pawns, and that's all it is, politics. They don't deserve this, and they shouldn't be subjected to abuse anymore.
Amen.
So to wrap this up, the decision to wear or wear or not wear a mask should be left up to the parent, not to CDC, not to Health Department, and not the Board of Education. That's the parent's decision to make. You, as the Harrison County Board members, were elected and put in position by citizens and parents of Harrison County. Therefore, the decisions you make should be based primarily on what those parents want. After all, they are the parents of the kids involved. The one thing is sure, more harm is being done to the kids physically, socially, and emotionally by wearing the mask. They can't see their teachers talk. 50% of learning comes from your senses, your sight, and your hearing. They can't see anybody's mouth move, they can't see a teacher's smile, and they can't see their friends talk to them or listen. So do the right thing, let the parents decide. If they want a mask, fine, if they don't, that's fine. If you don't reconsider, though, don't be surprised if parents vote you out of your position, or have you removed from office with state code 6-6-7. So please do what is right. Enough is enough. And I thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
You have one minute left, if you'd like to. Okay, thank you. Russell Sickles, Bridgeport, see here? Ryan Deems, Clarkspur.
My name is Ryan Deems, I'm president of the Harrison County Education Association. I'm here to speak in favor of the mask mandate. After surveying and talking with our members, I have found that 93% of responding members said that they were in favor of the mask mandate. 85% said that the current mask mandate should be extended for another 30 days, while 7% said they were unsure or did not have an opinion. Earlier this month, 18 out of 55 counties had mandatory mask requirements when their schools opened. That number is now over 30. Why? Counties saw the chaos that ensued without them. Classrooms and schools were closed within days of opening. We have personally seen how sports teams can be ravaged by the Delta variants. Masks are the only way to ensure that we get what we all want, a normal school year. If you've been in education long enough, you know that kids are going to come to school sick. When it's the cold, when it's the flu, when it's strep, it's a little bit different than the middle of a pandemic. We know, we know that the vaccine does reduce your risk of dying, does not reduce your risk of, or it reduces your risk of severe disease, but you can still end up in the hospital, you can still get sick. And that is a major concern for a lot of employees. If people, if kids are in the classroom and you are not vaccinated, which some people have chosen not to be vaccinated, which is their choice, and we're all about freedom, then they will still have to quarantine. We do not have, we do not have the substitutes to withstand large numbers of staff being Last year, one of our board members held up a mask and said, if these work, let's put them on our kids and keep them in school. I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent and Board members. I'm Judy Dolan, I'm a product of Harrison County Schools. I went to RW High School, my kids go, two graduated from Bridgeport, and one is currently at Bridgeport. I ran for, I ran for Board of Education. I, I'm really interested in education, I know a lot of your faces. I started doing research last year and investigated frontline doctors and CDC and all kinds of information. I'm, I'm an engineer, and I'm a mom. Sometimes decision-making involves both of those personalities. So I just want to impress upon you how a lot of moms and dads are feeling when it comes to their kids wearing the masks all the time. We get to see the sadness when they have to skip an event, we get to see the depression when they get quarantined for 10 days. It's just, it's something you never, it's something you never want to see your kids go through. So one of the things I did in engineering, I worked for General Electric and Pratt &amp; Whitney, is risk analysis. But that, I don't say that to brag, I say that because you guys do risk analysis every day, too, everybody does. When you get in your car, you are saying, I know there's a risk that I could die because 40,000 people per year in the United States die in car accidents, okay? I need to get somewhere, so I'm going to take that risk. Or let's say, for example, you get some spoiled ham out of the refrigerator, and you go, eh, I think I'm going to eat that because I'm really hungry, and I'll take the risk, right? You do risk analysis, everybody does. So I just, I'm asking you to allow the parents to do the risk analysis. My daughter has had the COVID, I've had the COVID, we are currently immune more than, and this is provable by statistics, more than the people with the vaccine. My husband had the vaccine in March, he has zero antibodies. I had the virus in January, I have the antibodies. My mom and dad had the vaccines, they're in their 70s, they have zero antibodies. So all I'm asking is, let me decide, because my daughter has already had the virus, let me decide whether or not she wears the mask. The American Academy of Pediatrics, updated September 2nd, says that 0.1% to 2% of children account for hospitalizations right now. 0.27% of all deaths, and that's just 45 states reporting, are children, but seven of those states had zero deaths of children, and one death in West Virginia, children under the age of 18, one, in 18 months, okay? So the risk is just so low. But then you take a look at the, at the masks and possibly keeping the children out of school because they've come in contact with somebody, the risk of them being depressed or losing a part of their education is very high. So we should say, send them to school. Now, if you don't want to send your kids to school, you should have that option, too. If a teacher doesn't want to teach because they're afraid, don't teach. We've got, we've got all kinds of people graduating who want to teach. 99.9%, 99.97% survival rate for children. 99.97% survival. There's no danger of wearing no mask. Okay, so why no mask? Number one, it was only for emergency use authorization. Here we are, 18 months in, we're still doing it. Not effective per the American College of Physicians, quote, "Masks did not reduce the incidence of SARS-CoV-2 infection," unquote. Number three, cloth masks actually increase bacteria. They've done tests on used masks, because we're breathing on them all day, right? And our body temperature's 98 degrees, we're increasing the problem. There's also mental problems that are being caught, being caused, because part of children's development is from contact and smiling. So I just, I'd just like to ask you to say, let, let this be the parent's choice. I plead with you guys, as parents, as a mom, and to stop being afraid. From, from the beginning of this pandemic, I've, I've prayed unceasingly, as they say, right? Do not be afraid. 365 times in the Bible. Do not be afraid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Terry Bell, and I have six grandchildren in the school system in Harrison County. I'm going to be speaking kind of fast because I've got a lot of stuff, and I got to avoid some of it. I have four things that I'm going to express on, against the mask mandate, as far as requirement. A German study of 460,000 students showed the transmission of COVID-19 from teacher was four times higher than from a student. Teacher-to-teacher transmission was 14 times higher. It's statistically impossible for children to drive in a pandemic. Researchers analyzed schools in Florida, Massachusetts, and New York, found that there were no association between school mask mandates and case rates in the schools or even in the community. Children are not super spreaders. Multiple contact tracing studies show that the R0, which is the reproductive number for virus production, is less than one for children. Number two, children are at a very extremely low risk. A total of 219 children in the U.S. died of COVID in two seasons. That's negating other ailments. In a normal flu season, the death rate is 450. There is three to four times higher mortality risk for the flu versus COVID-19 in children. Number three, masks don't work. The particular size of a COVID-19 virus passes through every one of the masks that you guys are wearing, and the ones that the students are wearing. These cloth masks are just a security blanket for the schools. According to the National Academy of Science, Engineering, and Medicine, show that fabric and cloth masks may capture large respiratory droplets, but there is no evidence that they impede the transmission of aerosol implicated in the spread of COVID-19. Now, the school board has a mask policy that if a student is found to be positive, that they must send the other kids that were around that student home. Now, if all the kids have masks, why do the kids that are around that student that was positive have to go home, too, for 10 days? Because if the masks work, then they work, but if they don't, they don't. Why do students in gym class have to wear a mask, and some teachers require masks to be worn outside on the playground, but yet the student athletes don't have to wear masks playing football or on the basketball court? That seems kind of contradictory to me. It proves that the board might not necessarily believe that masks work, or they would have masks on every student during a sports event or a basketball game. Number four, my final one, fast, forced masking is detrimental to the children and their well-being, psychologically and physically. Studies from the CDC indicate that there is a 10% increase in suicides in students when masks are required. Children need facial cues for the social development and interaction. Masks create isolation and alienation. Children that need help developing their social skills and interaction have setbacks when they're forced to wear masks. Masks get very dirty, especially with kids. Do you really think that these masks that these kids wear are actually being washed and taken care of? Some of these kids, a lot of them, come to school dirty. They don't even get a bath, let alone get their mask washed, and they come to school with dirty clothes. So they're wearing these masks all week, and maybe longer, not being washed, full of pathogens, bacteria, dirt, grime, breathing into it, laying against their face. This is almost tantamount to child abuse by a mandate by the school board. The University of Florida did a study with six masks that parents subjected to the, to the college for it to be studied. Out of these masks, and they were from six to 11-year-olds, they were worn five to eight hours a day, one half were contaminated with one or more pneumonia-causing bacteria, one-third were contaminated with one or more strains of meningitis-causing bacteria, one-third were contaminated with antibiotic-resistant bacterial pathogens. Also, there was found less dangerous pathogens, but nonetheless, they were found, ones that caused fever, ulcers, acne, yeast infections, strep throat, periodontal disease, and even Rocky Mountain fever. Does this sound safe? I don't think it sounds safe to me. And these masks, a lot of them, are not being washed whatsoever. As was indicated by the gentleman a little bit ago, some counties do have a recommendation, but not a requirement, to wear masks. I feel that that would be the way to go. One thing I just want to ask the school board is, a few questions here real quick. Does, did the board have an end result of this 30-day mask? Did you formulate a matrix and say, if this happens, we're going to do this?
We're not allowed to interact, so.
Oh, yeah, I know, this is, okay, you've taken up some of my time. My other question is, do you formulate a matrix at the end of the month for these results? If this happens, we're going to do this. If this doesn't happen, we're going to do that. Was the timeframe just an arbitrarily random time, a 30 days or the first month? Or did you have a criteria, that you use medical stats and information, or did you just say, eh, we're just going to do 30 days? Those are my questions. I got a lot of this information from civilrightslawyer.com. His name is John Bryan, he's in Monroe County, West Virginia, in the Panhandle. It is civilrightslawyer.com. I would encourage the board to do research themselves, and maybe even go to that website. I was asked that the mask would be voluntary and optional. That is, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alice Perry. Don't wait for speak. And final call, Russ Sickles, Russell Sickles.
I just wanted to come to speak and just to voice my support for continued mask mandates until COVID either gets under control or vaccines are mandatory. I'm sure that you have looked at the current cases. It's worse now than it was back in January for ICU cases and for vent cases, hospitalizations are going up. In other states besides West Virginia, Florida, Georgia, and others, children are vectors of transmitting the disease. States are having increased COVID pediatric hospitalizations, ICU stays, and even, and even deaths now. I have an 11-year-old who cannot get vaccinated. So the choice to send your kid, the choice does not work in public health. I can't choose to go to the, the restaurant and smoke, right? I can't decide on my own to, to do these things. You know, stuff like, like public health, like smoking, like polio, like smallpox, they are, they're, are public commitments. They're things that all of us must agree to do to protect the most vulnerable. So my son can't get vaccinated, so when a parent chooses or says that a mask is about choice, they're, they're making that choice for my, my kid. And so.
No one spoke over you when you spoke, and that's disrespectful and uncivil. No one spoke over top of you.
So thank you, I was respectful. So thank you, I was respectful and listened to everybody else. So you can't, obviously, you can't still transmit. Masks aren't perfect. They're not an end-all, but it's all about probabilities and keeping people safe who are vulnerable. So can't get vaccinated, we have family members who are high-risk. My son's best friend is staying with us right now because his grandma and grandpa have both died from COVID complications. This is real, it's happening. I mean, you guys, if you look at the hospital data, it's pretty scary. So masks are an easy intervention, low cost. Really, it is the least we can do to protect people. My kids are fine with masks. They understand, they're responsible enough. They know that they're helping other people. It's not too much to ask the adults to behave in an adult way and to be responsible. So cool. And the other thing is sports. I'd really enjoy, I'd like to watch sports this year. I know Bridgeport, they had a scrimmage canceled, they had their first game canceled. Last year, I lost about, my daughter's a senior, so I lost about 10 matches. And so I just, I mean, that's like the smallest thing, but selfishly, I really, really enjoy to watch my senior daughter play volleyball. And then there is, a study just came out on September 1st. It says that surgical masks do reduce COVID. It's a Stanford study, a Yale University study. And these are just the, I mean, I'm wearing an N95 masks, which we all can have and which certainly do protect us from a lot of things, but they're talking about the surgical masks. And so they do reduce COVID spread. They studied, it's a double-blind, you know, all that kind of stuff. It just came out on the 1st, I'd encourage you to look into that. And then, you know, I just have a couple other articles about Florida and Texas. I'd encourage everybody to look that up, to see what's happening there. So that's it. Just want to, you know, until vaccine mandates or until COVID is under control, we need to protect the most vulnerable. And I think that's the least we can do as parents. We can't protect our kids. I really, I'm not sure what else there is to say if we can't just obviously do that in something as small as having a mask. It's not a big deal. Thank you.
Moves us down to superintendent's update, Ms. Stone.
Sure, the first item we have on superintendent's update is curriculum and technology. And I just wanted to update you and to let you know that we did make an assignment or Mr. Poole did to get a tech in the building. And they're there one full day a week. So the teachers would have access to our techs. I just wanted to update you that he did make that schedule and we're working on that. So, and also working on putting together a technology committee as we requested. The other one is facilities, and I'm sure Mr. Lopez could update us on facilities. I will say, I was able to visit Lost Creek Elementary their first day. And then I actually went over when they were unpacking and what a phenomenal job the staff did there to get that building ready and open in the amount of time that they did. So I just want to say kudos to that Lost Creek staff and for everybody that worked to get them there. But they were able to unload those boxes and they were ready for open house for those kids. So, and then Jimmy can give you updates on some of the facility stuff that's going on there.
Yeah, we've had a great deal of cooperation. Again, we'd like to thank the board for the extra help with some of the summer maintenance workers. We were able to really get a lot of work accomplished in a short period of time. And we were getting down in Frenchtown. School opened, and I think things are going well on the Lost Creek, South Harrison High School, South Harrison Middle Campus. The purchase of the doctor's office across the street really alleviated a lot of the traffic flow. Some of the traffic patterns has worked extremely well. So I think people were getting accustomed to it. It's like anything else, when you try to make a change, it's difficult. But I think people have grown accustomed to it, haven't had any complaints. The administration seems to be happy with the way things are working together. Actually, there's extra parking spaces on that campus. There never was before when I was president. So that's a good thing. If you don't have anything else with the Lost Creek, I'll move on to the Gore project. And it's still, there really isn't a great deal of change. The biggest change is the fact that everything is going up now instead of digging down to do some of the foundation work. So we're sharing that facility with transportation. And that's been a little bit of a challenge. The city window's done a nice job of helping share that facility. And things seem to be going well. We're keeping a transportation office open down there, basically make you, but we have air conditioning, we have water, not hot water, but cold water. And it's working. Good cooperation there. Some of the, I think the Bridgeport project, you can see that it's gone well. They're down to trying to finish up some of their weight room. The press box is operating well for the first game. As far as transportation itself, and I'll kind of shift gears. We had a tough first day of transportation. It's gone extremely well after that. Yeah, we've created some changes that we knew going in that it would create some panies, some things, especially the Bridgeport area. However, a lot of things have been decided on throughout the years that was just easy. And it was just added on. And we needed to do some things to really correct that and knowing that it was going to create some of this. But it was still the right thing to do because if we moved forward, we have a lot more kids riding the school buses in the Bridgeport area than we ever had. Because it's timely, it's a little bit more timely. So we feel good about that. The, as far as the calls that we're getting, concerns that we're getting are now minimal. In fact, it's kind of a normal complaint process. So I think other than that...
United.
United?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that. I had the opportunity to go there too. And for the space that they have, the way that it's been laid out and is operational right now, I said they've really made lemonade out of lemons over there. Because they, and we've done a lot of work to that building. And it is working, and the kids, the buses are running smoothly to get the kids there. And another shout-out to the staff and to the folks at United for putting that building together and getting it ready for kids. A lot of work. If you'd have went in a couple weeks prior to opening, you'd have been amazed at two weeks later what... I mean, it's a school and it's working well and operational. So thank you to the staff there.
Yeah, a big shout-out to the administration there. And also...
And maintenance and custodial...
Very positive atmosphere from what I've seen. So they're making it work the best that they can. I think it's a pretty good situation for them at the moment.
And they're utilizing every inch of space in that building.
Unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
For personnel, Mrs. Leithburg was going to update you on the ESAR funding for learning loss and the positions that's being created for them.
Yeah, all the professional extended-day positions, you'll see all the creation. That's all through the ESAR funding, throughout the different schools, the different levels, throughout the county. And so those were being uncaused this year.
If you remember, there was a section for learning loss that was in that initial pot of money.
Summer breakfast, summer during lunch, and then summer at the end of the day to help get that...
Those are extra curriculum, so we're not on the hook after ESAR.
No, we're not adding any positions for that. There's also the math and ELA tutors being added to all the buildings. That'll be available for the kids. We also have interventionists being added to the elementary schools, and they are so many hours per week. And each elementary school and middle school and high school had to kind of come up with a plan on how they wanted to utilize their funding to reach the students' needs and what each building needed. So they really kind of allowed the schools to tailor that to what they felt their schools needed as far as learning loss. And of course, we've got the kids now back in. We had them last week, so we're starting to identify more what those losses are. They're, you know, they've got time to be working with the kids and to find out where their needs are. So we're trying to tailor that, those services to meet those needs. So, and you'll see those on the posting. I mean, they'll be coming out, so that's what those jobs are.
And that's why it's listed with different hours and different times. It's just flexible depending upon the students' needs.
The next thing is safety and health. I just wanted to update you just a little bit. They did change quarantine guidance. We've been working with our health department. And if children are masked and they're next to a positive, they are not being quarantined. If they are in an unmasked area like the lunchroom, then they're only taking out those students right next to them. So we're able to stay in person. We've had 75 positives just since last Monday identified in our school system. Those 75 positives have been students, and we've had four staff members. And due to, you know, staff members being vaccinated and the health department are not quarantining those with masks on that are located next to the students, we have stayed open, and there are counties that have closed. 75 positives last year would have shut our classrooms down. So, I mean, that, we're working with the health department for those minimal quarantines. And it's during the unmasked areas. If they're outdoors, they are not required to wear a mask. So, and they are changing the guidelines. The State Department, State Department of Health sent us new guidelines, and that is actually what Harrison County had been doing with our health department already. So, and they're still recommending masks at this time, the health department. The other update would be the United Technical Center. We had a meeting, we had our monthly meeting last Friday, and Mr. Hook was there.
Okay, we had a student that placed second in the Nationals, and they will, they've been invited to appear before the State Board of Education, and it was in computer technology. And the person was from Harrison County. And there's, you know...
Oh, he said there were only five?
Yes.
Five students nationwide?
Nationwide.
And one of them was from Harrison County?
Was from Harrison County. We had one, and that was in the computer technology area. They had open house down there, and 128 people, you know, kids showed up for middle and high school. They said, as of right now, at the day of this meeting, the enrollment at the United Technical Center is 320. And Daughtry County, they had somewhere in the neighborhood of, in the middle twenties of students transported from Daughtry County to Harrison County for the technical center. They also just opened up their own facilities at Daughtry County, but it doesn't, it's not in the same areas as often at the technical center down here. Theirs is more in the oil and gas end of it, welding and things of that nature there. So that's the building and the program that they started in Daughtry County. So, you know, some are there and some are here and all. And other than that, that was pretty much the important things that we talked about in regard to the Career Center, United Technical Center.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. The last thing, and I'm not sure if this is the place to put that or not. We have, she was not able to be here for the last board meeting. Bobby Joe Harvard is our new nutrition director. So we've asked her to attend this meeting so we could introduce you to Bobby Joe. And I think you've got some family here. If you'd like to stand up and recognize your family. She is working, she's taking the position that Mr. Durico held, and she'll be working under Mr. Durico and learning the position.
This is my son, Drew, who's a junior at Fairmont State, and Max, who is a freshman at Fairmont State.
Welcome aboard.
Harrison County graduates, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
Bobby Joe came to us from, she got her administrative license, and she's worked as a social worker for us and a librarian. So she's been in the system for a while, so we're really pleased to have her in as our nutrition director. So, thank you. She also ran one of our summer programs and got to see how the kitchen worked and the whole summer food program. So we appreciate her coming on and taking on a big task. Because as you know, with this, with COVID, feeding has been a large priority to make sure our students are fed while they're not in school or they're doing virtual or homeschooling or whatever a choice that they are making for their schools. So it's been a big job, so thank you all. Thanks really for, Chris, for leading the way for that. That's all I have for superintendent's update.
I just have a quick question. Like with the, the parents are here asking about the mask. We said there was new guidelines handed down, so they were just asking us, it's like, what is the, what is the plan? What is the data that we're going with? We said we are at 30 days. What do we have to see within that 30 days to change the mask mandate? What was handed down from the state? Just so that we can...
The state put out, well, we've gotten several things from the state that's saying that the health department has the authority to shut schools down if we are not following their guidelines. So they can do that because it's considered a health, I mean, for the wellness of all the health. So anyway, they recommended that we do masks, so we are not quarantining. And Mr. Bundy, the director of the health department, is asking that. He said that there's going to be a peak, which I believe we're in right now. And if you look at even the map, Harrison County tends to be in that corridor, 79 corridor, and we're just, we're staying red. I mean, we're kind of in a hotbed right here with Lawn and Marion, and it's, he says it's that I-79 corridor. They're expecting it to peak and then they go sharply back down. So where we were at in July was a phenomenal place. And if we were there right now, we would not be wearing masks because, I mean, it was a very different scene in July with numbers. I mean, he's seeing 60 and 70 positives a day. Over the weekend, there was over 100 positives that came in. And it does affect our school system. I mean, we've got 75 positive students. And like I said, that number last year would have put out multiple classrooms in multiple schools. But because they're not quarantining mass numbers, we are absolutely looking at every situation and trying to keep the kids in school. That's what we're wanting to do. And we're telling our teachers to, if they can get them outside during this pretty weather, take them out, let them get outside, get the fresh air while we've got this nice weather, and hopefully we can get through this situation.
I would just like to have the health department come back here and talk to us about this and show the stats, the data on what are they using for the criteria for this. Just, and I bring it up at every board meeting, there's tons of data on here saying it's more harmful than helpful with the kids. So I want to know, have them explain to us and all the parents out there what criteria they're using to mask the kids. And I understand if we're trying to keep these kids in school, I understand you're in a tough spot. But if we're now going to the health department, then I need the health department to come here and explain what data on kids they're using to mask the kids. Because there's tons of data. The CDC's own data of 90,000 students shows it's more harmful to the kids than helpful. That's the CDC's, not junk science. And there's tons of articles from 90,000 to 400,000 all showing it, that it's more harmful than good. One of them shows it increases your odds of COVID by 20%. One, it increases your suicide rate. Like suicides killing more kids than COVID. So I would love for the health department to come talk to us and all the parents on what are they using for their criteria. We are bound by, I understand we have by law, I want to know what they are using so that we can put it up on our website so that all the parents out there know, based upon these, this data. And then they can look at all the other data and say, okay, well, I just want them to look at all the data. The science is not clear because the CDC's own data, and there's three different studies by the CDC showing masks are not effective and more harmful to kids. By the CDC, World Health Organization says the same thing. They're a world health organization. So if the CDC's... So if the CDC's, three of their reports, World Health Organization, tons of studies all over the world are saying it, what are they using to mask our kids?
We can get clarification from this.
Yeah, we can. And the, uh, they're looking at the positivity rate for the county.
I, I understand.
And the numbers. And also, we did receive a letter that was signed by all the pediatric doctors in Harrison County, so.
I, I know.
That came with the health department.
I'm saying the CDC's own, own results are saying, and they're worried about the medical license and medical boards, because everyone's got them in fear. So I would just like to have him here to talk to all the parents and bring the data with him showing this is why he made the decision, based upon the data, how it affects kids. Right? Where they're, that's what I want. So if we can arrange it for next week.
And that, the, um, like, elementary kids are unvaccinated, they cannot be vaccinated, so.
Right, I understand.
He says it's a protection.
But the, but also the studies show that they don't spread. The studies show, not, not me, the studies, the science, going off the science. So that's where, that's where, again, where I just want him here.
We will have, we will have some clarification, but we need to.
That's fine.
But we're not, I mean, it, it's not fair for you to debate the science if you're debating against him and he's not here.
I, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, here's my reasoning why I'd like him here.
Okay, we will handle, but we, we.
Yeah, we can do that.
You think further?
No, I'm, I'm finished.
Is there a pro, a move, motion to approve consent items?
So moved.
Second, moved to second and in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, legal services agree, this under new business, legal services agreement between Bowles Rice, Stufteau and Johnson, Harris, Wilson, Turner, and Davison, BLLC, and the Harrison County Schools. These are continuing, uh, letters, uh, for both firm.
Yeah, that's an annual, yeah, annual update. Now, Dinsmore and Scholl, we still use them, and they signed a longer agreement.
Okay.
So they're currently still.
And we're not bound to use them for any of that, it's just setting the rates.
In case we would.
Is there a motion?
An action we approve.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second and in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries memorandum of understanding between Fairmont State University, Glenville State College, Grand Canyon University, Pierpont Community Technical College, Salem University, West Virginia University, and Harrison County Schools for placement of student teachers. Is there a motion?
The understanding between the following universities is mentioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And mine is. I'm glad they're all together as one instead of trickling. Usually we have.
My, my only question is, uh, if we could get a number of, uh, student teachers, uh, that are seniors that are coming out of these colleges, because everybody says, well, we're, there's so many plentiful, uh, posi, you know, teachers, and that's, that's not true. It's evident nationwide. I know this past year, out of, uh, West Virginia University, Salem College, and Fairmont State, there was only four teachers that, uh, come out of those.
In secondary.
In secondary.
Yeah.
They came out.
And there was, we had 28 elementary that graduated from all of those.
Okay.
That all the counties are vying for.
That they're all after, because I know.
WVU had one. I think they graduated.
WVU had four secondary.
They had four.
And we got two of them.
And my niece, my niece was one of them, and she was a math teacher. And, uh, like I said, the, the kids are just not going in to the educational field because, uh, you know, they say, well, the, the lack of money, you know, they don't get paid enough to take and go somewhere else and make more money. So there's, there's a whole lot less number that's going into education, and then there was about, uh, 40-some years ago when I, uh, I was in that field.
If we didn't use retirees, we couldn't open the doors.
Exactly. If we didn't have retirees coming in to sub, uh, there'd be a lot of days that, uh, school couldn't go on. School couldn't go on.
And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries memorandum of understanding between community care, West Virginia, and Harrison County Board of Education. Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second and in the discussion.
Is, I know, uh, we were, we had talked about, uh, talked about, was there other, other people?
Couldn't get any interest.
Well, I spoke to a, a couple of private doctors, and they're interested, but they're interested for next year. They said it will take them a while to really, but it's really non-profitable. Um, this, they, community care is spurred up by a lot of grants and, and federal money. If a private company or a private group would, would like to do that, if, they said that they would just do it as a service for the schools, it would be pretty much a, just trying to cover their costs. So we're going to put out a RFP, um, probably in January, to see what we get for next school year, to see if anybody would want to take that on.
The, do they cover the mental health aspect as well?
They, they do. Community care, if the, um, clinics were not there, the mental health piece would not be there.
Well, that needs to go into the RFP.
Yeah, so in the RFP, we will include all of that, the mental health piece of it too, yeah. Yeah, it's, if they have difficulty.
It's gonna be tough if you couple them together.
Right now, the community care is.
What do they provide us in mental health?
They have a psychiatrist and a, and a team that come in and work with, right, it used to be four schools, I think it expanded to seven. And they're, they were doing telehealth, uh, at the end of last year, and now they're back into the building. They, I mean, there are referrals from the schools. It's these kids that need additional support from the counselors, or they make a referral, and then, then they're going in. I think Tammy had that service at Adamston when you were there. Yeah, they were just getting started.
There's like scheduling times for students where if there's a need, they would come over and.
So.
Provide resources for the families.
The 800 number that we have from, like, Todd had set us up with, um, so they would contact the community cares and talk with the students. Is that how it works?
No, that's all separate.
No, that 800 number is really a separate thing. It's through the state that they can make refer.
In addition to.
It's just another side of it that's there.
Easy funds, okay.
Well, I, I understand.
There's one psychiatrist, I think, in this local area.
Speed, in addition to what you just said. Um, I know Pivot provided a lot of mental health with the grants, and I know there was also a physician that was created with the Pivot grant, and then these people, um, it is really confusing, confusing to me exactly what is in every single school, at what levels, because we have counselors and, you know, I mean, it just seems like, I mean, I, I understand what Gary's saying, there's not that many of them, but it sure seems like we have them at every level.
Not psychiatry.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, exactly what do we have in our.
They, they are meeting the needs of probably a tier-three child that's already seen the counselor, they've already had interventions at the school, and it's not, they're not getting the results that they need, or they need more resources. So then they would come in as a mental health team to work with that family and that student. And sometimes it's an off-site placement, it could be, um, depending on what the care is. But most, most of it, I'd say 85% of it, we can do in our buildings, and we're very fortunate, that is one area that we've been able to fill positions in Harrison County. We now have, just as of last year, we do have a counselor in every building that's available. We also have an LPN, a nurse professional in every building. Um, so we're very fortunate in that sense.
Well, I'll tell you what my issue is with this. I understand that we're going to be looking into it. Then my issue with this is that they were, and, and you, I, I always hear that it's unprofitable, and they get all these grants, but yet they just bill, bill, bill Medicaid so our local doctors can't. That has been and will continue to be my issue. If they are receiving grants, why are they billing Medicaid? And so that when they go to a doctor A who is at our either primary care or in our, in our neighborhood, that would share an information with, like, West Virginia Medical.
I can explain a little. I mean, they're, they're getting, they're a qualified rural health clinic, so they get money for that, which is a subsidy, subsidy to that. 99% of their business going onto the school is going to be Medicaid billing, if not more. Most doctors are not going to run a practice only billing Medicaid. It's not profitable.
The private doctors that I did speak with were, that's what they were talking about. They would have to bill more.
They'd have to bill the parent.
They would.
The money. If it was private insurance or whatever, they could do that. But they're not going to bill for what Medicaid pays. They're not going to make a profit at it. So they're for profit. Community care is a nonprofit. They can afford to do it because they have subsidies to do that. But no doctor.
I was going to talk to them about sharing information. Is, uh, information shared if they're, you know?
Like, if they would visit a community care clinic in the school, then.
Yeah, whatever they do there, they're giving shots, they're giving physicals, they're doing, I mean, that's what I just looked at, they're doing the preventive and wellness checks, uh, bill to Medicaid. I mean, I just, I still don't understand why they keep themselves separate. They're doing the physicals for our athletes. I mean, they're just really about doing everything.
If those records exist, if they're doing something for Medicaid, if you're, if a doctor's billing anything, there's a record that exists for that.
But shared with who?
I mean, the patient has access to all of their records by law.
Yeah, the family.
The family can, can give them.
So if I went in and said, okay, my kid's going to get his physical here, but his, but our family doctor is Mr. B. Well, I want this information shared with my family doctor.
Yeah, by law, they have to.
The private doctors that I spoke to to see if they would be interested in this, um, they, they were telling me, a lot of the patients that are going through community care don't necessarily have primary care physicians. When they have Medicaid in these medical cards, they tend to go to quick care places. They don't stick with one family doctor. He said initially, they were very concerned that the information wouldn't get to their primary care physician, but what they're finding out are these families, they don't, they just will go to a quick care, they'll go to an emergency room.
Medicaid requires it.
Yeah, so.
But you have to have one. You have to have a, what is it, agent, not agent.
I think we need to.
For the private hair physicians, but it doesn't mean that they've ever visited them.
I think as a school system, we need to make sure, um, and really the way it works in a school is if you have an LPN there, that child goes to see that, the school person first. Then they make a phone call to the family and say, are you interested in them seeing the clinic if they feel they need additional support? So they're not running them all through that community care because it could turn into that where they're just all getting, but we contact the family before they ever.
So we're never making the determination to send them to community care. The family says, send them to community care.
I mean, my concerns have been the same for seven years about this, and, and I do have to say you just provided a little more information in the fact that we have LPNs there. I mean, I've always felt that we were non-employed.
They're the first line. Well, it's usually the secretary. They take, they still go to the secretary, and then they take them to the LPN.
Well, it seems like we always have nurses in our school, which I think has always been very, very important to, you know, get medicines and things like that. And I felt that a lot of this that's being provided could also be provided by our nurses because it's not actually a doctor coming into our schools. It's basically their nurses.
Right.
I, I mean, I'm just saying, you know.
And some families will say no, yeah.
As much as possible to stay in there, some families, as always.
Okay, and we will make sure.
In some way, we'll come pick the kid up, take them.
Yeah, a lot of, well, I'm not going to say a lot, but sometimes you call, and they'll all come get them and take them to their doctor. We just need to make sure we do a good job at the school level to make sure that the families are being notified if they want care or not in that class.
Yeah, I think that's very.
Yeah.
One of the suggestions that, that I had spoken to you about earlier that maybe we want to consider is it might be too much for one individual local physician to take care of the entire county. So why not open it up to local community physicians?
I said it, that's what I said.
Like, there's each community.
Have each, have each theater school go with a different community. Have, have someone in Shinston go with a Shinston physician.
Just like the Sentinel, right?
Physician, just like the dental.
I agree 100% with them. That's what I've always said, that it doesn't need to be in one physician. I think the theater area is, I mean, I, I think that's the most important because that's who they're going to get to.
And you know, we could put it out that way, and.
Yeah.
And nowhere files for these three, and you may have one.
I think we should do that.
Does three.
I agree 100%.
But we're right, we couldn't get it.
I had different physicians say they might be interested in all of it, and then, like you said, there may be some that could just be interested in that small.
Well, you might get out in theaters, that one that's interested in all, they can also bid on them.
Right.
They could, they could, yeah, absolutely.
I agree, yeah, I think that's the, that's a good idea.
And there's not really a bit, I mean, to be, I mean, to clarify that.
Well, they're not.
It's like professionals, it's same as how we take an architect. We just, so like, it's professional.
And I, and you want to know something I would like at one point? I, I don't know how valid they are when we put out ballots or whatever we do, or comments, or open comments. It would be nice to know what parents think about, you know, how we do our community care. I mean, I'm wrong here right now in this room because of health, basically. And so I, I just, I would, I would like to actually know how the parents have responded to the community care.
Okay.
And I'm sure it's positive. I'm not saying it's not positive. Uh, my complaint has always been taking business from Harrison County doctors, basically.
I can do that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries memorandum of understanding between West Virginia Extension Service Family Nutrition Program and Harrison County Board of Education. Is there a motion? Motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries memorandum of understanding between, is it, mine?
Minig.
Many, uh, family, family district, Harrison County Board of Education. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, uh, no policy updates, no old business, personnel matters with an agenda adjustment that's included in there.
I will make the motion to approve the personnel agenda with the agenda adjustment of pulling Jacob Hayers from the personnel recommendation list.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, board member comments. Uh, Mr. Dodger?
Um, I'm just excited to have the health department here. I think there's a lot of questions parents have, and, um, that, that we need answered, and if we have to do what they say, then, uh, they need to come here and answer those.
Ms. Messenger?
I'm good.
Mr. Hoke?
I'm good.
Mr. Devano?
I, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I mean, it's, it's a very hot issue, it's a very hot topic, and, you know, everybody has their own viewpoints and their own ideas, and you're entitled to your own viewpoints and your own ideas. And, and my goal is to sit here and listen to all of them and to try to make the best possible decision that I can based on the information that I have available today. So thank you all for coming, and thank you for expressing your concerns.
And I have the same, uh, as Mr. Devano, other than just to add to the fact that, you know, we're a divided nation, we're a divided county over issues like this, and we need to be able to sit in rooms and listen to differing viewpoints without shouting each other down.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we can't learn to do that, then we're in bigger trouble.
Mm-hmm.
So with that, is our motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Children of peace, go in peace.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.